And so, that's the recommendation that I would like to make you with tonight. Just to give you a little bit of a brief background of how we've gotten to this point, three years ago, we were set to adopt a math curriculum. We're on a seven-year adoption cycle and it was new year for math. We invited the companies in, just like we do with every math adoption. And at that point, the math committee didn't feel comfortable with recommending any of them because they thought at that point that there was really nothing that was totally aligned to the new standards that were voted on by the State Board of Education in 2010. So, it was their recommendation that we go with a transition curriculum. So during the summer, we brought together some teachers, some math experts, to put together that transition curriculum that teachers would then use for the following year. As we went through the year, it seemed to be working pretty well, but midway through the year, teachers became a little frustrated with the fact that they didn't feel like they had a real scope and sequence and they felt like that their kids were developing some gaps that they couldn't fill. That's when teachers started looking for something supplementary online and they came across Engage New York. And again, the end of that year, we brought the textbook companies back because every textbook company, and I think this is right, they can revise thirty percent of what they have in their textbook without calling it a term adoption. So everybody was slapping on the front of the Common Core line, but again, with the math committee taking a look at it, they again felt that it wasn't where we wanted it to be. But they did start to see some promise with some classrooms that were using Engage New York. And some of the teachers wanted to pilot Engage New York. So at the end of that year, we had, I don't know, several classrooms that were piloting just Engage New York. Well, that showed enough promise that we wanted to have a pilot district-wide, and that's what we did last year. So last year, we had our district-wide pilot of Engage New York, also known as Eureka Math. And we probably had the most comprehensive evaluation of a program that we've ever had, putting together focus groups with parents, with students, with teachers, we had some surveys, and we did a document study that showed the alignment of the curriculum to the standards. So that's kind of where we were. And at the end of the year, we also found that we thought we could enhance the program through making some modifications. They were probably really accommodations, but we called them modifications. So at the end of the year, we came to you with the idea that we would like to have another year of pilot using those modifications. So the documents you received over the past couple of weeks are the documents that both of those committees looked at. The only thing you did not get to experience there was the, was a couple of teachers who came to the committee to talk about how those modifications looked in their classrooms. So I've asked Kayla Burke to come speak with you a little bit about those modifications and how they work for her. And I believe you've seen Kayla before, she spoke with you last year, but she's also on the math committee.
Hi. I'm a third grade teacher at Hurd and Matthews. This is my sixth year of teaching. And some of the modifications in my classroom, well, first I'll start off by saying it's a very scripted type of material for us. And that's good because a lot of teachers come in, or even the new material that's coming in, you don't quite know how to teach it or which direction to go with it. But what I love and respect is that they respect us as educators and are letting us modify it to the best needs of our students and enhance their learning. It's a very scripted material and it comes in a lot of paper pencil. And my kids don't do a lot of paper pencil. A lot of my work goes up on a smartboard, just like this, every single day. I've got a kid who runs it and they know which tools to push and we're constantly going through slides and one will click on and it'll go to a song. And Engage New York, not once does it tell us to teach a song, but my kids learn skip counting through songs. So again, another modification that they allow us to do, is trusting our judgment with educating the kids. I also tie in just different materials from my classroom, bringing in whether it's Unifex cubes to count, or rulers when it's not asking us to do that. But again, you know the best, what's best for your kids. And so, we're just kind of making those modifications. But I thoroughly enjoyed having the trust put upon us as educators, you guys hire us. And we are with our kids every day and we kind of know what would maybe work best for them at that time. All of our kids learn in different ways and I think you guys would see that teachers teach in different ways as well.
We know that we have a long ways to go. We know that because some schools have had more professional development than others during the math summit, that is a focus that we will be working on, is making sure that we have some common professional development. We do have math coaches in every building this year. Maybe not as much as we would want, but I think that has made a difference. And anyway, that's something we want to focus on. What questions do you all have?
One of the shortcomings identified by the review tool was that the Engage New York doesn't provide multiple entry points for varying student needs. And listed under your modifications, is that addressed with the scaffolding? Or how, where is that addressed on the modifications?
I don't know. Kayla, do you want to address that as a classroom teacher? How do you deal with that?
I think, again, it just kind of comes down to you knowing your kids and you just kind of modify them accordingly. There's a lot of ways you can go about this and I guess I just, I'm not sure, I haven't quite seen the modification sheet that's been made yet.
I just want to make sure that since that specific line item received the lowest score for Engage New York, that we address it with a specific modification.
And one of the things that I know that teachers have done is that everything's online. And again, knowing their students, they know what the gaps are, they're able to dig into the materials that they're going to pull out what the students need. And I know that we had one, one teacher last year who was teaching special education students, knowing that her students weren't all on the grade level, she was able to take where those gaps were and go into, maybe she was teaching the third grade, she could go into a first grade curriculum and pull out exactly where that foundational skill starts so that she could identify the gaps in that way.
I agree with her. I tutor as well for math and I, none of them are in my grade level right now. And I go back and pull their grade as well and look at it.
Just a follow-up, I was thinking, I really am happy to see the vast facts, like math facts. I know Jean, you had commented that that's an important way that your kids learn and that that wasn't part of the core curriculum for Engage New York, but it, I think that's an important piece to add and it looks like it's been addressed. So I appreciate that modification.
Yeah, I have a couple that I want to ask. I've sat on both the committees, so I feel like I've heard a lot of the information before and I don't want to be too repetitive. I know, as I've visited with teachers and just my experience on it and self-commenting in the committee about it not being user-friendly, or some of it not being consistent from the lesson to the exit ticket or, or with the homework, what it's called. But what are some of the ways they want to address that? Or is that consistent? Is that a concern with the curriculum specifically?
I have heard that. I don't know with your experience, what you're seeing there?
I would say, I mean, even in my classroom, and that's kind of just something I learned in my master's course, is that you look at the assignment and you kind of work your way backwards. So I look at my lesson and I know exactly what it's there and I have my board and everything like that. And then I look at the assignment and see where do I need to get them to? Where's the goal? And I guess that's how I would handle that situation.
I think handling homework is the, is one of the biggest complaints. I mean, is that's the, when the parents get frustrated, that's when the kind of the communication breaks down.
Right.
And the relay of teaching from school to home gets broken. So, and we've all heard a lot of that, so.
And I think that varies on the school as well. Every school may have a different requirement as far as what kind of homework's going home. I do my best to get as much done in class as I can because I think that's only fair for me to be there to teach it with them. And again, it's just one of the modifications where one teacher might give more than another. Some of the kiddos that I tutor come home with quite a bit that I'm working on them with and I don't give my kids that. So it's just kind of a difference, I guess.
And also on that, we have worked with the teachers at the beginning of the year, the coaches, some of us were able to go to St. Louis last summer and take an in-service on customizing the lessons. And we did that as an in-service with the teachers at the beginning of this year. And then I also offered it as an after-school release time. And we're also going to do that on January twenty ninth. So, and that, but the whole goal of that is, is the teachers look at the end, which is the homework and the problem set, before they plan their lesson. So they know where they're headed with the kids. And then they also individualize the assignment that they give and the problem set. They choose problems that they call, what we call must-do problems. And then they also have can-do problems and challenging problems within that problem set. So we're trying really hard to make the teachers understand, the goal of the problem set is not for them to do every problem, but to do the problems that fit the instruction that the teacher's given. And then the homework is supposed to mirror what they did in the problem set. So the teachers were at, we've asked the teachers not to send home homework, that the students have not practiced in class.
And I think that customizing the lesson has been an important thing for everybody, something that they've shared with you guys this year.
Yeah, I guess, and you kind of covered that part, because I felt like initially when this curriculum was piloted, that it was presented as it needed to be done specifically the way it's presented and not to do any add-ins of the stuff they need to do. And I had a first or second grader at the time that kind of hit that. And I've seen her, she has those gaps that she missed out on, one of those basic math facts and that kind of thing. And I, and we've talked a lot about how this is the curriculum that's most aligned with the Common Core standards. And the data and the research shows that, and it shows it way above the other curriculums that were looked at. I don't know how much I trust that, or I don't want it to be skewed, but I worry about that because I looked at the comments and the parent surveys and I felt like I got a well-rounded look at the students that were struggling. So those are my concerns on how user-friendly this curriculum is, even though it's very aligned with those standards. I just want to make sure our kids get those basics because I know that with the new standards and this curriculum, they're trying to make them deeper thinkers. We talked about that. And problem solving, that's important, but I, I just want to make sure, and I think with the modifications or accommodations, I hope that that will help, make sure they get those basics so they can do that problem.
Good, and you're right. Those foundational skills are so important.
I just wonder what kind of response you'd have for teachers in terms of like attending your training?
At the beginning of the year, it was a required training. So all the teachers were supposed to attend. The one I did after school, I had about six to ten teachers for that at all different grade levels. And I haven't seen, the one I'm doing on the twenty-ninth is specifically six grade teachers. I haven't seen the roster for that yet. We also work with that in our PLCs. All of us coaches have PLCs with the schools that we're working in. So we also work with that in our PLC time. So they're getting it a lot. And I think we're seeing more and more of them incorporating it. It is a lot of work, a lot of prep time, and that's probably one of the hardest things. It'll get easier.
To me, it's, the teachers are feeling like they have permission to make those modifications for the customization. So I felt like it was good feedback, what the PLCs are.
I just have one other. I know that each classroom is named and each teacher is part, which is also very unique. That with these modifications, is, are those shared during PLCs? Or is there a lot of collaboration when the, when modifications happen? Or?
The modification list was shared with all teachers because that was part of what we wanted to do with this new pilot, was to let them use those modifications in their teaching. So I believe those were all shared at PLCs.
And the three buildings that I am in, it varies because like at Jenny Barker, there's one teacher for each grade level. So I coach with them every other week and we talk about those kinds of things. At Edith Charman, I have two teachers for each grade level and I have PLCs with them twice a month. And we do that in their PLCs. And then at Bernadine Sits, we have PLCs, three PLCs a week where we work, at least two of those are dedicated to planning and to sharing strategies that go with the Engage New York curriculum. And I think that would be true for all of the coaches. It varies depending on the number of teachers and the way the principals have guided us and what they expect in their buildings.
I was interested in Jean's.
I think we say we want it to be user-friendly and yet we have something that is so scripted that, that, you know, as you mentioned, when teachers don't know what to say or how to teach something, it's scripted. Well, to me, these things ought to be understandable by our teachers so that they can relay them to the students. Because if you just stick to a script, the particular words that you're using may not, not be comprehensible to a student. You have to change your wording or give examples or whatever. The script aspect of it concerns me because it seems to straitjacket the, the teaching of it. And I, I don't want to have our teachers feel that. I think in the past, they have, and that it's been to the detriment of our students. So while I think the script maybe ought to be a guideline or one way of approaching it, I, I don't want the teachers to feel that that's, that's, you stick to every word. I mean, throughout what we read in here, there was, you know, we stick to the pacing and we've got to keep going and, and, you know, some of these students are going to fall by the way as you go through these, these concepts because they don't quite get one, but yet we're continuing on with another concept and maybe they haven't understood the prior one. That, that's a concern in math since it does build over the years. I know we're looking at just K-sixes right now, but, you know, to try to add on the middle school and high school level, if it's a problem filling those holes at this level, it's going to be impossible to do it at the, at the higher levels where we don't have a couple of years' experience with one system and then adding, trying to transition to another. So the, the script aspect of it bothers me. I do think we need to give our teachers as much freedom to use their professional ability to get through those concepts to our students. And I'd really like to, to see more discussion about that. I read through the comments and there seems to be a discrepancy between the charts, which seems to look like everything is positive, parents love it, to the comments, which seven, eight, seven of the eight of them were, were not favorable. And I, so I do think we need to be really cautious about how much we expect children to do at home, how, how much we depend here on parents to reinforce things at home because this is very different. Parents didn't get the instruction that the children did and, and they certainly weren't taught in the same way, so it's very difficult for most parents. The bottom line is, it has to produce results. It can't just be, you know, a great program and we went through a process with meetings and, and nice charts. These, these students really need to, to know what they, know the math that they need to use in the future. And if this is the way to do it, then I'm very much in favor of it. But I don't want to drop that part of it and, and not look at that curriculum. I want to see that, that they're learning. Because we're counting on too much. This is a huge part of their education and, and significant in almost every field that they're likely to go into. So I, I want to really see that it's working. And I really hope that we get reports, you know, at least quarterly.
Sure.
On, on how we're doing. I guess the accountability piece is really important. Not just that it's working, but that the, that the working is producing students to work and work ethic that are able to, to do math, to work with mathematics and things. That's pretty much it. Mark, do you want to go there?
No, I, I am encouraged, I mean, this whole process, which is a significant process that you have reported and engaged, engaged Garden City on, it, it's amazing and it's encouraging, but it's very different math and it's a very different process. And we're learning a lot as we go. I mean, it's amazing how we've gone from this, what became sort of a foul word, with fidelity, to flexibility in implementation. And, and with all this work, I can't help but be gung-ho, I guess, on, number one, the fact that we've got to have something. And we've got to shoot high with the standards we're expected to, to meet. I'm not sure why we would have to, why we couldn't give it another year. But it's kind of six and one and a half a dozen the other, the way I see it, in adopting or giving it another year. Because giving it another year, you're still fully engaged in this wonderful process of trying to make it work for the kids and for the families. We're, we've got to be in partnership with the parents. And the kids, if they're disengaged, it's pretty tough to shove this stuff down the throat. And that happened a little bit in feedback I heard on kids' frustration that they're doing great in math, they thought they were great, and all of a sudden their feedback was they were terrible. And then they just didn't want to do anything. I think we're past that, I hope, particularly with empowering teachers. We've got to do something here and I think we're doing a great, we've got a great effort. I just wonder whether we have to adopt it officially or whether we can just keep working with it another year. And, and that's just another way of addressing Jean's concern of regular reports and evaluation. So how we get there, concerns are there, great work is there. And there's still a little apprehension, I think, out there. But I'm pretty positive the process.
One thing, Mrs. Bicker, that you said was about the scripting. Engage New York, even the, and the Eureka people both have been very adamant that it is not a script, that those are vignettes of what it should, it could look like in a classroom. I will tell you, I do walkthroughs in twenty classrooms a month and it's different in every classroom. I do, at Bernadine Sits especially, I will go into all the fifth grade classrooms on the same day, so I see the same lesson being taught and it's different in every one of those classrooms. The thing about doing it as a pilot for another year, our teachers are working really, really hard and they need to know that the work they're doing is not going to get, the rug's not going to get pulled out from under them in, at the end of the year, at the end of the cycle or whatever. That's.
Well, again, if I may comment on that, is if it needs, if we need to change, we need to change. If we don't, we shouldn't. Whether you call it another year pilot or another year of evaluation, another officially adopted curriculum, whatever it is, I would hope we still take the same powerful process that we're following right now, evaluating and empowering our teachers to get things transferred to the minds of those kids.
Well, first, Madam President, I want to thank you for starting with Lori. The problem is now, you guys said everything I want, huh?
You got to cut mine, my guy.
You know, last year, I think my concern was that some schools were doing things different than other schools. And I talked to Ms. Roderick and a couple of coaches, I think we were working on improvement there. It sounds like we are. I talked to the math teachers, I think they're, they're engaging New York a lot better than what they were last year. And the bottom line is, it's all about, you know, making sure these kids understand math. So I'm in favor of the document, but I'm also like Jean, I want to make sure we're, we're evaluating this thing on a quarterly basis. Getting parents' surveys again, is the, is the math program still as good as you think it is and so forth? Were we able to survey, what, seventy percent of the parents? Is that right?
Yeah, we didn't get a big turnout. We, every year, we have a survey that goes out, parent-teacher conferences, first parent-teacher conferences. And we added this survey onto that one, so.
Well, seventy percent, to me, seems pretty high, so I was impressed with that. So hopefully, we can do that again this, this coming year after we adopt this. And I'm, like Mark, I'm encouraged that the, that the program's a good program and we're doing some good strides with it. In the end, you know, if it's not working, then, you know, we have to do something different. But I think if we continue on the path that we're doing and making corrections as we go, I think it will work out, at least I hope it will work out, because that's a lot of work that everyone's doing. Your program, you know, has a short amount of time to run, so let's try something different. So hopefully, we don't get there, but I, I want to continue to get reports on, is it working or is it not working?
You know, the standards are much more rigorous and that's part of the problem. You know, it's something that we didn't have as students, it's not anything that I ever taught, but it's different. And that's something that we have to educate the community. And I'm very encouraged with Melissa and Karen, you know, providing this opportunity for our public to come in and see side-by-side teaching. Here's how we used to do it, here's how we're doing it now. Hopefully, we'll have a lot of attendance at that so that we can really start to educate people. I don't like, as we've been handling this out of coffee, I don't know how many more people attend, but I'm hoping that we get some participation.
I just wanted to very quickly add, the number one comment I'm hearing at staff meetings is, from the teachers, is, you know, we've put a lot into this curriculum and please don't change it now because now we're getting the hang of it, now we kind of understand and that there's like a fear and, you know, we're developing their lesson plans more thoroughly. And really, that is by far the biggest comment that, that I'm hearing with faculty meetings. So if you guys are hearing differently, probably ought to talk about it. But I think that's encouraging. I think we really need to follow the lead of the educators since they're the ones using, using the product, so.
And I would. It's really part of the script. The script, they're going to use it the first couple of years before they really become familiar with it. It's probably about the third year that they kind of start feeling more comfortable enough to get away from that script. So it will be fun to see what happens next year.
And no, you're fine. And I agree to that too. And I like that you used the word guideline because that's pretty much what it is. I have not followed word for word, ever, using that. But like you said, we are more comfortable. I'm probably more confident now than I ever was all year last year. And my kids are showing that and I'm so proud of that. But again, I've had the modifications, excuse me, that has also pushed me to, you know, find other ways to educate my kids. In the morning, in the lunch line, in the breakfast line, they're doing flashcards, which, they're not telling me to do that, that's what I want them to do because they're making valuable, valuable use of their time. So I just feel like we're all finding other ways to, again, encourage them in this, this process.
I also, I realize that you guys have rules about, you know, how many of you can
I also, I realize that you guys have rules about, you know, how many of you can be in the same place at one time, and all of that, without calling it an official meeting. But if any of you, if you can figure it out how to do it legally, to come to that forum on Thursday night, I think that you will appreciate what you're seeing. I know that three of the teachers that I work with are going to be doing that side-by-side teaching, where they're going to teach a concept the way that we used to teach it, and the way that we're teaching it now. And I think that will open your eyes to understanding how different this curriculum is. It's not new math. It's the same math that we have taught for, this is my 40th year, so at least that long. I taught, I've taught the same concepts. It's just making sure that they understand why they do what they do, and not just are able to solve a problem. So if you can figure that out.
I think strategic seating locations.
Well, there'll be breakout sessions, so maybe that will work out for you.
Some of my concerns, I guess, is still the parent component. I know we discussed having newsletters. I, as a parent, I haven't seen one this year. So, but I know where to get that information, because I've been through these meetings. So I know to go to engagenewyork.org. Yeah, so if I need help. Fortunately, so far, I haven't needed that. But I think I'm concerned about that parent component. And, but I do like the fact that by implementing this program with fidelity, there is now the understanding that fidelity with this particular program is flexibility. That has always been how this program is supposed to be. And I don't know why there was such a disconnect last year between what we were hearing here at the board meeting and what the teachers were telling us. Because I heard from teachers before board meetings and after board meetings, that they were being told, we can't do anything different. We have to go strictly by what this is. We can't change the pace. And I'm glad that we're now hearing that that's now trickled down to them. So I'm glad that that's finally happened. And I hope that carries on. Because as Kayla said, we hired you all because we believe in you. We believe you can teach our children. And that's what we want our teachers to be able to do. But another thing that I think is also important to note, we have spent a lot of time on this, but we have other curriculums that we need probably just as much information on that we recently adopted, too. So if we're going, I don't want us to just necessarily be focusing on that curriculum information and getting that quarterly, like the Empowering Writers. I'm really curious about that curriculum. Honestly, that's probably one that I'm, one of the votes that I voted on, and I'm probably not the most comfortable on how, on the information that I had at that particular time. And I'm hearing different things now. So, I mean, if we're going to be doing math quarterly, I think we also need to be hearing about the other curriculums as well. So we know that all of this is going on, because I think we saw from our scores, the ACT scores and the SAT scores, that we're lacking in a lot of different areas. And we need to make sure that everybody's moving forward. But I'm really excited about this particular curriculum. I enjoy this particular curriculum on a now fourth and fifth grade level. So I'm looking forward to making sure the teachers appreciate it. And it seems from the board that remains that we're moving in that direction. So...
One else, just one other comment. We've talked, or we've heard that, you know, the curriculum is aligned with the Common Core standards. And that's, that's good. But what I really wanted to be aligned to is with positive results for our students. I want that to, to follow. And that those results be measurable, national standardized testing. And I know they don't really get to that level until they're probably in high school and get their ACT. But that's really where we're going to find out if this is working, and this is the best way we have to teach math. But it's so far in the future for most students will be all interesting. We don't need to track this really carefully. And not just based on the Engage New York method of tracking, but our own common sense and our ability to look at this with our, with your experience in teaching math in other ways, or your own background in math. So even if it fits exactly to what Engage New York is proposing, if it doesn't seem to work for the teachers or the students from a common sense, practical point of view, it needs to be adjusted. Because we're teaching our children here, and every single one of them in the classroom is unique. And they're all going to learn in a different way. But those are the ones we're responsible for. So I want that to be as beneficial as possible. So I'd like the flexibility piece, but we've really got to look beyond, not just a different way to teach this concept, but to broaden it to everything. So when these kids are all up in high school and taking those ACTs, we've got some great results.
You should start to see some of the submitted results come out of that third grade, when we take the census assessments. Because really, those are based on those state standards, the national standards. So you should start to see that.
Thank you very much for, Dr. Butler.
I'd like to thank everybody that's been involved in, in this process over a three-year period. This, this adoption pilot process, I can't think of 28 years of a curriculum process that we went through that has been more detailed, or where we've applied more scrutiny than what we've done in this situation. And there's a reason for that. This wasn't adopting a textbook, which is traditionally what our curriculum adoptions have been. The standards have changed so dramatically. The rigor has increased so much. This is a huge change for students and for teachers. And it's not something that happens in a short timeframe, like when we adopt. In the old days, when we adopted a new textbook, and it took the teacher a few months to learn the ins and the outs of the new book. And once in a while, if there was a dramatic change, there might be a chapter that was flip-flopped, and after a year of working with that book, people were comfortable. We are not teaching a different math, but we're asking people to do it in a way that we haven't done it that way before. And so there's some significant, some significant changes that have to happen in order for that to happen. We're trying to help create, or we're trying to create a process here whereby our experts vet these things for the board. Leanne mentioned that we had a committee of math teachers that here very, over the, over the, this timeframe, and very recently, made a recommendation to the Curriculum Council, that this is the curriculum that they believe is the best choice for us, for our kids. Folks, these are our best people. These are our frontline teachers. These are our administrators. I think we've got some parents involved in that. And these are our folks that are taking the time, rolling up their sleeves, and digging in, and looking at all this information. And that's what we need them to do. They're our experts. And they made a recommendation to our Curriculum Council, which is just getting up and functioning. But those will be our curriculum readers in this district. Those should be our people who are best equipped to help you make good decisions in, in these recommendations in terms of our curriculum. So I'm pleased that we're bringing this to you through a process where we're getting this in front of, and these kind of decisions in front of these groups to make a recommendation to you. And I hope you see some value in, in that process and with that group. You know, we got our math scores this year, and I think we were all a little disappointed. And in talking with teachers, and talking with my team, one of the things that we believe is we can't just look at our math curriculum. We have to look at our overall math program. It's bigger than just the curriculum. That's a very important piece. But if all we do is change our curriculum, I don't think five years from now, 10 years from now, we're going to look back, and we're going to feel like we've done everything we needed to do to help our kids, like Jean says, when those kids get to that high school level, to really help our kids be where they need to be. But the curriculum is really one of the first things we have to...